Call the meeting to order, we're gonna be letting the pledge by Ms. Palitti.
Let's meet in the Capitol, from the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, an incredible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Ms. Boulay?
Here.
Mr. Bergarelli?
Here.
Mr. DeRae?
Present.
Ms. Green?
Here.
Mr. Howard?
Here.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Mr. Levinstein?
Here.
Ms. Palitti?
Here.
Mr. Stridiron?
Here.
Moving on to item 2.1, public comment on agenda items. We're gonna get the list and everyone's got five minutes and we'll start as soon as we get the list. First on the list is David Ryan. Letitia Palitti.
Okay. I'm speaking on agenda items, roles and responsibilities, processes of the board. This is an item I requested to be on the agenda and when I did, I received an email from my colleague, Ryan Lamar, stating, questioning why I would put that on the agenda when we already have this in place. Well, I'm glad you asked, Mr. Lamar. I understand that we are new at this. The majority of this board has only been here a year or like me, much less. Therefore, it is our responsibility to familiarize ourselves with these procedures. For example, we are a board of nine, not a board of two. Board goals for this school year were created by two, Darren Stridiron and Deb Boulay, without any input from the rest of the board or upper administration. This is supposed to be a collaborative effort. The board president and the vice president do not have power or authority to do this. Policy 2105, School Board Access to Information and Reports, states a single board member may request certain information and/or reports, other than board agenda or committee agenda items, that would take a substantial amount of time to compile, which he or she can demonstrate is necessary and receive that information if the board member's request has the support of the majority of the board. This policy is not intended to compromise the individual rights of board members, but is intended to facilitate the orderly and efficient functioning of the several administrative offices of the district. Vice President Deb Boulay sends multiple hostile emails a week, sometimes per day, demanding information that would take central office staff away from their responsibilities to compile without a majority of the board consensus. This is a violation of said policy. According to the New York State Ed Law, individual board members have no inherent powers by reason of holding office without power to individually authorize action or direct personnel. Yet Ms. Boulay sent me a list of demands to put on the Curriculum and Instruction Committee Agenda that I chair. She and Darren Stridiron, our president, demanded the meeting be held even though committee meetings don't meet over the summer. I held the agenda meeting in good faith and presented the demands as concerns relayed to me by my colleagues. These demands were basically orders to throw out the existing core reading program with nothing in its place for our upcoming school year. Our assistant superintendents patiently addressed my concerns, but I could see very clearly by the end of this meeting that the intentions of Ms. Boulay and Mr. Stridiron was not a plan that is best for our kids, but a vendetta of their own with no boundaries. They also sent a direct order to Mr. Forgett, who was ordered to interrupt said meeting and dictate my actions. When I refused, the rumors began flying about me and my family. Our board president, Mr. Stridiron, following our last meeting on July 18th, went to News 12, Blaise Gomez, and told the world that Newburgh administrators and our board were at odds for making our current sex offender policy more stringent. He said, and I quote, "That our current policy allows them to be hired, be parents, or students in the building." These are bold-faced lies. Our current policy does not allow level-three sex offenders to be hired. Any person who works in a school knows this. All hires have to be fingerprinted and background-checked before working in our schools in any capacity. Our current policy and procedure in place flags any sex offender if they attempt to enter any of our buildings, when they go through security and have their IDs checked. They are then escorted out by security and told not to return. The current policy is also the policy given to us by NISBA, the New York State School Boards Association. They vet all the policies out as legal so that we don't have to at the district level. Mr. Stridiron knows this and still chose to lie publicly about it. The board tabled the vote so that we could bring it to our district lawyer to make sure that we were not making our district vulnerable to lawsuits. Mr. Stridiron also wrote on Facebook that he has asked for this policy to be revised for years. This is also a lie. He voted in the affirmative for this policy in 2017 and has not brought it back to the floor since. You can check all of the board minutes going back to this time. This is schoolyard bullying at its best, and at its worst, I fear much more. You have defamed the board and everyone sitting up here and made our district look foolish, Mr. President. We are here to make good decisions for the kids in our community. You are not here to tell multiple series of lies that make you look like a hero and put our already vulnerable district in a bad light. You are both not here to be dictators. You want hard and fast, unbreakable rules for our scholars, but all the rules we are governed by are malleable for you, Deb, and Darren. The Board of Education must model professionalism and work together collaboratively to set the tone for the district and most importantly, be role models for our scholars. I ask the community to be shrewd and discerning. Always pay attention to the actions because the words are misleading. Thank you.
Shawnee Burks.
Are you making sure my mic is on today? Um, so, I'm basically gonna back up what Ms. Palitti said 'cause I've seen the Facebook posts and I too don't understand, I've even seen it on Instagram, why the narrative is out there that sex offenders are allowed on school grounds when my state law, sex offenders are not allowed on school grounds. So why would you put the narrative out there that Newburgh and Lark City School District is allowing sex offenders on the ground? I think that's inappropriate and quite shameful for the president to put on his page. Also, um, about a week ago, this is from the president's page and the vice president was commenting on his page concerning the meeting that we had two weeks ago, the school board meeting, and the president's brother called out Mr. Howard and said, "I would like to come to the board meeting. If I come to the board meeting, they're gonna have to call the cops." How is it that you, as the president that sit on the board of our school district, allow your brother to make such a comment like that on Facebook and not even address it? You don't delete it, you don't do anything. Also, Ms. Boulay commented that she asked two of the community leaders, Ray Harvey and another person, and we both didn't get back to you guys. I did get back to you at the last board meeting and I said, "If you wanna know what's going on in the community, come to the community." Newburgh night out just happened. I didn't see any of you guys there. I did see superintendent there, I did see Ray Harvey there, I did see Mr. Howard there. I didn't see you guys there, but if you guys wanna know what's going on in the community, the only way to know how is come down to the community where it's almost about more than 85% that takes up your district so you can figure out what's going on in the community so you can understand why the homework policy, the grade level policy, and the sports policy will affect our kids in a detrimental way. And that's it. Have a good night.
Darren Stridiron. I have to address those comments by Ms. Palitti. Policy 5450.1 clearly states in the special circumstances that the sex offender could be a registered student, a participant, or an employee of the district. If you've read the policy, that's what it states. How is that not allowing, with this authorization of the parole officer and the superintendent, how is that not allowing a sex offender on school property? Yes, they have to be fingerprinted. Yes, they have to go through a system. But they are allowed under the current special circumstances to be on school grounds. The state law, if this special circumstances is removed, would not allow them on school grounds other than after a certain period of time, I believe it's 7:00 PM, to vote. And as far as my brother posting on Facebook, anybody who knows my brother, I don't tell him what to do. There's nothing that prevents me from commenting about it, but I'm not gonna comment about it. I don't go back and forth on Facebook. As far as me defaming the board and dictating anything about the committees and this, uh, goals, the board goals, I asked at a public meeting for everyone here to supply their board goals. Everyone here, in public. You can go back to the video and that part is probably not edited. So you can see for yourself, I asked for everybody to supply the board goals. Only one person did. And it was Deb Boulay. I can't control what you write to the board. I can't control any of that. And so tonight, the board goals are presented for your approval. It's been a month since I asked for those board goals. Could've submitted anything in writing, but you didn't. And as far as you calling me out in public, you could've just picked up the phone, written an email, but instead you do it publicly. And that is defaming. Would anyone else like to speak on agenda items? Mr. Phil Howard.
So, just a few questions. You just said that you asked a month ago. Did you send out follow-up to those requests? I've been on this board for 11 years and board goals have never been submitted with the inclusion of just one person. It's usually done in a retreat or in a workshop environment where we all collaborate, we all try to decide what we want to be our annual goals for the year. Also, I wanna go back to the level-three discussion because you intimated some things that aren't necessarily true and I believe you twist words a little bit. So, I think we should take this opportunity to ask our superintendent quite candidly, Dr. Campbell, could you please tell me and give me an example of how this will come into play? The allowing of individuals who are level-three sex offenders. Can you talk to that? Can you speak to that? Would it be a situation where we hire level-three sex offenders? Or will we allow level-three sex offenders to be on our premises? And can you speak to what that looks like and how that would happen, if it would ever happen?
So what I'll say is that during the policy conversation, we will provide a response.
Okay, I'll go with that. And, um, to post on your Facebook page, Mr. Stridiron, that seven people voted down that policy at the last meeting was not the truth. Actually, it was tabled. Well, someone said it on your strand and you did not correct them. You did not correct them. So you allowed that false information to be out and it basically lied on the seven members on this board who the person actually named, all seven members voted, excuse me, all seven members and the superintendent voted this down, which is deceptive, it's misleading, and it's basically a lie. You had ample opportunity to correct that error. You did not. And then you say that we voted it down and actually it was tabled so that we can get more information, so that we can understand the law, so that we can understand what the part that was being etched out and read, what the liability would be to the district. And I hope at some point tonight, Mr. Shaw can speak to that, can speak to the idea of this being a NISBA, um, policy and talk about the vetting that's done up top when these policies are sent to the school boards so that people will understand, all we wanted was more information. We didn't wanna table, we didn't wanna allow rapists in front of our kids, we didn't wanna allow level-three sex offenders in our buildings. We wanted to understand the law. But that's not what was portrayed on your social media account and I think it was irresponsible. And one last thing, even when you say, "I'm speaking as a citizen, Mr. President", everybody knows who you are and they assume that you're speaking from a point of truth. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Mr. Levinstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm gonna say my comments on the policies till that section when we go through them, but I just wanna make one statement that's quite amazed me over the years. Employees get fingerprinted and have to go through a process to get approved to come into a building. Parents go through the Raptor system and they're checked. The only people that enter a school building that are not checked are the board members of this district. I don't know if it's every district, but that always amazed me in the 10 years that I've been on and off the board that board members do not go through any of these processes. I just want people to understand that. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on agenda items? Do you state your name and the agenda item you're speaking on?
Hi, I'm Victoria Boucher. Um, two things, well, three things technically. I wanna speak on a sex offender policy. I think from a public standpoint, it was more viewed as, why would you want more information instead of saying, "We don't want a sex offender in the school"? I think a lot of the public doesn't understand the legality behind that. So I think when you're talking about these things, you have to be a little more detailed oriented in what you're actually stating as to why you're tabling it or whatso and so forth. Because I think a lot of people looked at that and said, "All these people want sex offenders in our school. So, what's the point?" Um, so that's my take on it. I think that you're doing your due diligence and getting all of the facts and I understand that. But I think some of those policies have to be more head-on and stronger. I mean, if you were to tell me that my son and my daughter are gonna be possibly allowed to be around a level-three sex offender, that's worrisome to me. I expect my child to go to school and be safe. I expect my child to go to school and be respected. I expect my child to go to school and be treated as equally as everybody around. And with that being said, the 55 grading policy, I'm just gonna say that we should want more for our children. You should not ever, as a parent, say, "Give my kid a 55 and let him, and just do it that way." To me, that's crazy. Saying that, "I'm just gonna give him the score and they don't have to earn it." I'm 34 years old. I went to NFA. I played a sport. We had standards and they had to be met or we were benched. I myself one time failed a class and I couldn't play my junior and senior year. And that was my consequence. So the fact that these kids are being told and taught that it's okay to not do the best that they can do, you're doing a disservice to them. And again, I don't know the intricate details of how these are made or how they're stated. But again, you need to want more for your children. I need to want more for my child. I'm 34. When I'm 70, having my kid that can't read or write helping me when I'm 70 is doing me no good. If they walk across that field, they should be able to read, write, and do the basic necessities to go on to the next level. We should want all of our children to go to college or go into technical careers. To get a driver's license, you need to be able to read, you need to be able to write. And the fact that you're lowering the standard is kind of a slap in the face. And my last comment is that you clearly all have issues with each other. And I think for the sake of our kids, you need to figure it out. And you need to grow up and you need to put your petty stuff to the side and do what's best for the kids. It doesn't matter. If you guys are fighting all the time and doing two hours in an executive session 'cause you don't agree, when two, three, four months ago, everyone agreed, it's weird. And it doesn't look good to the public. You guys fighting all the time, coming at each other all the time. I've heard comments about Darren, I've been hearing about Debbie, I've been hearing about Letitia, about everybody. You need to come together. That's your job. And I understand you're not paid. But the future of this district and the kids in this community are on you guys 'cause you make the rules. It's not a good look. If there's any kind of discreditation, it's the way you guys act towards each other. And we see that and it's talked about. That's why there's Facebook posts, there's why there's things that are said. And you wanna sit at this table, you guys are the leaders of this district and you're embarrassing. I don't care who you are. Every kid deserves an education. Every kid deserves to be treated equally. Every kid deserves everything. But if you're failing and you're playing football, what good does that do after 12th grade? It's a valid question. And the way that things are spun, it goes one way or the other way. And you guys are supposed to come together. That's why you were all elected to this board. The public and the community want you to do what's best for our kids. But all this stuff in between, you're not getting to the real problem. You're not. And digging at people and calling people names and saying this and saying that makes you all look a fool. Because why would I trust you when you guys can't trust each other? That's it. Thank you.
Does anybody else would like to speak on agenda items? Okay, we'll move to non-agenda items. Mr. Ray Harvey.
Um, good afternoon, um, superintendent, board members, president. You know, I'm sitting there and I'm listening to people speak, right? And one of my favorite things to say is, "Make it make sense." And we need to make sure we do that, right, on all levels. Like, um, speaking of brother, when, and this is who I am. When, and you can take it however you wanna take it. I'm a big guy. I can handle that. It seems to me that when people look like me shows up, the police is called. But I get threats on Facebook, "Where's the police?", right? And that's from the board president, brother, that none of us, not that I know of, threatened anyone. And the police was here because we didn't feel, we felt threat. Well, when you make a threat over the internet, we should take that serious too. Because if I called into the school and I make a threat, you take it serious. So, when someone is making a threat to people that 85, 90% of the community is looking like, we should take that serious, right? And to, when, when we was running, and I was one of the ones that was running, a lot of stuff came at me. People were saying I shouldn't run because I'm the president of the NAACP. It was false narrative put out about me because that's not true. If you wanna know something about the NAACP, join it and then we can talk. Or come see me at a general meeting that we hold if you want to know the policies. It's the same thing. You got policies. That's one of the board members speaking tonight. Read your policies. Know what you're doing, right? Know, same thing with the sex offender. That's a legal thing to me. I don't care how you twist it. Legal has to tell you what to do. Nobody else can tell you what to do. That's why we hire these lawyers, so that they can tell us what we're doing, how we're doing it, and what we're supposed to do. Not me or anyone else saying, "Well, we shouldn't do that because..." And to be honest, you are right, we shouldn't do it, but if it's legally that if we don't do it, we can get sued for not doing it, then we have to come to terms on how to make sure that if a sex offender is on these grounds, that they are escorted by our security or police or however you want it to be, right? Because again, it's protecting the kids, the school, and everybody else, right? Because if that's legal, then that's what we gotta do, right? And further adds, we should all be here for the good of our kids, nothing else. We should put personal feelings aside, which sometimes people have a hard time doing that. I don't. I don't have to like you, but I have to respect you, say. Because when I go home, you don't come to my house. So I don't have to like you, but I'm gonna respect you. And that's the way we should approach each other, right? The respect that everybody should receive and should give, right? And that's not what's happening right now. And I think some of that was from Padilla. Everybody was so upset about Padilla. It's done. Let it go, please. Let it go. Let it go. Again, that's why we got the lawyers. Nobody did anything about that without lawyers sitting down what's involved. So if you have a problem, talk to the lawyers on both sides, right? Because that's who told us what we could and could not do, right? And for that tabling things, things get tabled all the time. It means that we need to know more about when somebody said table something. So let's not play games, you know, and say, "Well, they wanted to vote." No, that ain't what that meant by tabling, you know? Some of us do have a little bit more throat when we hear something like that. So again, please, I beg you, work for the kids, not for yourself, but for our kids. Thank you.
Shawnee Burks.
Hello again, everyone. So I'll be speaking obviously about non-agenda items, but if you wanna get technical, they all kinda coincide and come into one. So I would actually like to agree with the young lady sitting back there who came up and spoke. The pettiness is getting out of hand and it doesn't look good for the district. I've seen the comments also. And as the vice president of the Newburgh Parent Alliance, I had to call an emergency meeting that night because if you guys got feelings and your family are allowed to comment on these posts and all these false narratives, you think we don't have feelings and that we can't post? And it was very tempting because I posted it and then for some reason, it deleted. And I said, "Okay, God, you must don't want me to post." And I took it upon myself to be the bigger person and called an emergency meeting for the Newburgh Parent Alliance. And we made it a point to say that we will not respond on Facebook to these antics. Some of us did, but as the vice president, I said, "No, we're not responding to these antics on Facebook because it only makes us look more divided and it only adds fuel to the fire." If I can do that as a non-board member, why couldn't the president do it? Why couldn't the vice president do it? We all have our petty differences. We all have our issues. But on the outside, you should be able to coincide. I've been to plenty of community events where I've seen board members who vote on policies I don't agree with. They say hello to me, hello to you, and they say hello to my child. You would never know that we disagree on some type of political level because I make sure I hold myself to a standard to teach my son that you have to respect everybody regardless of how they feel of their political views. Another thing, I am sick and tired of the narrative that when we, as a people, and as a woman, as a black woman, when I speak up or when I stand up against something that I feel is wrong, I'm loud, I'm threatening, I'm causing a riot. If you guys wanna see a riot, look what happened on Sunday in Montgomery, Alabama. That's a riot. That was not started by my people. I'm sick of that narrative because it just lets us know that we cannot step up and say anything or defend our children. I was told by my son's advocate that if I continue to come to school board meetings, that she would not represent my son because I'm loud and aggressive in the meeting. Well, if that's the way you feel, then you don't need to represent my son. Because if you feel that way about me, I can imagine what you're thinking about my son in his head. Because unfortunately to the world, justice isn't the little boy that likes Power Rangers. He's a threat because he's black and he's an eight-year-old- He's a threat because he's black and he's an eight-year-old, built-in structure, young man. So you can say whatever you want, but that's how he's viewed as the world. So let's get rid of that narrative. If there's an issue and you don't feel comfortable, we can pull each other to the side and talk about it. Having a cops called and having armed policemen at a meeting that my son attends every Tuesday, he's not now because he's at basketball getting into something positive. He's at football getting into something positive. But to have armed guards at that meeting that my son attended, I didn't, I didn't feel comfortable. And the guards didn't feel comfortable because they came to me afterwards and said, I'm sorry. I don't want your son to feel like we are here doing harm to them. Y'all gotta do better as a board. Whether y'all agree or not, agree to disagree, get over it, make better decisions for our children and for our staff. That's it.
Would anyone else like to speak on non-agenda items? Mr. Walker?
Yes, excuse my appearance and my lateness, but I've been, I've not been feeling well. But I had to listen, I was listening to the broadcast. And there are some things that have to be made straight right now if we're gonna have a successful school year. The first is that they follow at least the tips for new school board members that have been printed out for the last year. They are not being followed, all right? They are not being followed. This is becoming a us versus them mentality. This is becoming something that does not deal with the school as a whole, our scholars as a whole, but individual agendas. The last meeting I went to, one of the board members said that he, she could be home drinking margaritas instead of being in that seat. Then why was that person even there? What did they have to prove if they're not supposed to be anything other than a servant to all the kids in this district? All of them. The condescension, the elitism, although as shaky as it was, was such that it would make me wonder, why are you here? And what did you do in education before to, with children? If you even had the privilege of having them in front of your classroom? I wonder if you didn't bully them or disregard them because of the way they looked or because they didn't look like you or whatever? Or maybe even worse, because they appeased your ego? Ms. Tisha, you were exactly right when you said that we need to pay attention to what the words that are being said and what's not being done. No one in this district has a priority over anyone else. There's a lot of shaky stuff going on in here. And pay attention to the language when, when you hear them start talking about or suggesting my constituency. That's their group. They're not talking about our kids as a whole. The idea that some people want to throw out this new reading agenda after the people came here and explained it, it has been, um, supported by a number of real educators as well, as well as the NAACP. It makes me wonder, well, is there agenda to not wanting to cover this, to support this? This is the beginning of a school year. I would not have gotten out of my bed to come here to say this. Except that watch and listen. Please pay attention to what is being said and what is being done. I don't understand how someone like, um, a certain board member who's been on this, uh, board for years in one of the most crucial, uh, areas, most crucial curriculum areas, I'm sorry, policy areas gets kicked off. Gets pushed someplace else, told to go someplace else. And someone who has absolutely no experience gets to try to run the show. Uh-uh. Uh-uh. Listen, be prepared, be organized. Because this district, and I taught for forty-one years, is supposed to serve all children. And I am frankly very upset that there seems to be an agenda that's going in another direction. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on non-agenda items? State your name, please, thank you.
Uh, Mackenzie Boucher. All right. So, um, I think I'm gonna echo a lot of what some people have already said and maybe make some people mad, but whatever. Um, so I'm a graduate of Newburgh Schools along with a lifelong resident of the area. And I really wanted to address to everyone sitting here today that I'm so disappointed in like the actions and treatment of some of you sitting right in front of me. The hate it appears that some of you hold for the board president shouldn't be something that the public should be able to pick up on. You're a group of nine that needs to work collaboratively as a unit. Discourse is one hundred percent necessary and will happen, but it should be able to happen respectfully, and it's currently not. The President's been on the board for years and as far as I've been able to see, which might be contrary to what some people have said, has not been disrespectful personally to anyone. Individually, you all hold your own opinions on the way things are run or not run. And you are able or should be able to be vocal on whatever platform you desire about the changes that you want to happen. However, when personal attacks happen, which has happened now at the last few meetings, there needs to be a line drawn. I've heard the board president called a liar because he's, he's been vocal about what happened to his child on the bus. Are we also calling the other parents who have gotten up here at this podium and told the public what has happened to their children on the bus a liar? I don't think so. Do you just dislike him so much that he could tell you that the sky was blue and you'd argue for argument's sake? I've heard that he has a conflict of interest because of a lawsuit regarding what happened to his other son a few years ago. Firsthand, I remember seeing publicly that he released the information on that lawsuit when he first filed it and, and described what and why he was doing it. So I'd like to say that first, that happened. Second, if it was a conflict of interest, I believe the lawyer would tell us that it was. And I'd, you know, bet money on the fact that if any parent had something happen to their child where the only recourse for accountability was a lawsuit, that you'd sue as well. It's been appalling to see how disgusting some people have gotten when they believe that they don't hold power anymore. You're all equals. Change is not bad. In the case of the school district, I'd argue that change is needed. When the same group of people have sat in the same positions for years on end and the graduation rate or literacy has not improved, then I'd implore the public to acknowledge the fact that change is absolutely necessary. As a taxpayer and someone who deeply cares about the community, it's sad to see that some people are unwilling to work with others and that they just want to argue. I can go on and on about what professional behavior should and shouldn't look like, but I think I've made my point clear on that. And I implore everyone at this table to look inward and acknowledge where you can and do, uh, you can be and do better because it's much needed. I also want to make a note about some of the policies that came up last meeting. Um, when I was in high school from two thousand nine to two thousand, uh, twelve, our policy for sports was that you had to hold at least a sixty-five percent grade in all classes and you had to have at least ninety percent attendance. And I actually checked the school report card from the year that I graduated and that seemed to have worked because we had a ninety-four percent attendance rate. Um, this policy at the time was told, all of our coaches came to us and told us what we needed to do to be able to participate in sports, which then forced the athletes into making school the number one priority so that they could do what, and they could do and be a participant in sports. This then allowed anyone who desired to play in college the opportunity to meet both the sports and the academic requirements to be successful. We need to expect better from our children so they can expect better from themselves. I again implore all of you to put aside your own animosity and really think about what will serve students in the long run beyond the years that they're in high school. We shouldn't just want them to pass, we should want them to thrive. This means that they have to be able to read and write, among many other things that they, that they should be learning when they're in school. We should want them to be knowledgeable and able to learn so that they can choose to do whatever they want when they leave the Newburgh School District. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on non-agenda items? State your name, please.
Hi, my name is Melissa Lamar and I'm a teacher for twenty years in the Newburgh and Lord City School District. So I am an actual educator. However, tonight, I'm speaking from my own viewpoint and do not represent my union or the teachers in this district. I'm just gonna give you a little bit of my lens, if you'll let me. Um, what I see and what I've seen is a shift in the lenses. What we've had since our last leadership was one lens applied for a very long time to education. And the reason I so support new people on the school board and having more voices at the table is because you're not going to get to truths without multiple lenses. Everyone has their own version of it. People have said, oh, let's not get personal. And yet, everybody that I've heard has gotten a little bit personal tonight. And so I'm gonna try not to do that. I'm gonna say that I've spoken to teachers since this new board has come in. And the first night, there was great hope in this district because it was a new beginning. And since then, it's been on a decline. I've had friends who've said to me, should I even work in Newburgh anymore? Should we be looking for new work? Do they understand what we're going to need to open the schools in September? In regards to the reading program, I will tell you this, I have one serious agenda. I want all of the kids in Newburgh to read. I'm a first grade teacher. I'm very passionate about it. You can look at my data and you can see the readings that I have, have offered to you. And we do have some lenses to apply to that, but unfortunately, haven't been heard. And that drives a lot of what's going on in the district. The teachers need a seat at the table too. The teachers need a contract. The teachers need to be respected too. And under our last leadership, the truth is that just was not happening. The evidence is there in newspapers. The evidence was there in our daily lives. So, um, I'm a little bit nervous because everybody in this district is intimidated to come here and speak to all of you. And I'm just letting you know that the more opportunity you open for those lenses, there are good people. We aren't all out here having wars with one another. We really aren't. We're just normal people trying to get the job done. So, and, and I don't believe that of any one of you either. I think people get put into places and they hear one side and they hear one lens and they don't know how to come together. So y'all need some mediation and you need some good leadership. I do believe you have a good leader. I don't agree with everything Mr. Stridiron says at all times, but I do think he speaks the truth for the most part, from what I understand and what I've heard. And I hope that I can hear everybody else's too, but it, it can't continue to be like this. It can't be somebody coming to obviously make a speech that's aimed at doing something else because somebody's mad at somebody else. It's got to stop. I'm gonna start in September with my little group of first graders and I'm gonna teach them how to, how to read for you. And I'm gonna do my best. But we need support too. And when we're telling you truths from our classroom, we need just an opportunity to be heard. So some of, some of that comes from there. And as I said, I only represent myself. I, I cannot, I don't want any of my colleagues held responsible for this. I don't want to be, end up in a meeting. I've spoken out before and ended up in meetings that were, you know, disciplinary. I hope that this, that's not what's gonna happen tonight. But I just couldn't sit here and continue to not speak. I have a husband that's on the school board, obviously. I sent him here so that I could help the kids learn how to read. Please just get back to that. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on non-agenda items? Okay. Good item four point one, executive session. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby recesses into executive session for the following purpose. Matter made for, matter made confidential under FERPA, employment history of particular individuals. Matters leading to the employment of particular individuals, the review of programs and placements of students with disabilities, collective bargaining under the Taylor Law, NTA, NSA, CSA, and to obtain advice from legal counsel. Can we have a motion and a second, please? Roll call.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard? Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Paletti?
Yes.
Ms. Stridiron?
Yes.
Ms. Belay?
Yes.
Mr. Borgerelli?
Yes.
Ms. DuRae.
Be back in approximately one hour. This is a test to see if the muting is working on the audio stream. One, two.
Section of the agenda 5.1 Superintendent's update. Dr. Mannicamp?
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for those of you who have taken time from your evening to engage in our community in this meaningful way. I would like to reiterate something I shared with the community when questions arose about certain district policies. For clarity, many of our district policies are adapted from those provided by New York State. Those policies are legally sound and are provided as a template for our district to use to support our scholars and employees while remaining fiscally responsible to our taxpayers. From my lens as a parent, I may not like a policy that is in place. However, as the educational leader in the district, it is my responsibility to present policies for review that are in compliance with the law and take into consideration all of our students, families, employees, and taxpayers. As mentioned before, they are drafted with legal review and provided by the state for all school districts to use. Therefore, it is unfair to have our district negatively highlighted for utilizing the exact same practices as our peers. It saddens me that despite knowing this, some members of our Board of Education are leading the way to more bad publicity for our district. A lot of work has been done behind the scenes to undermine my authority as well as my team. Our scholars and the community look to us for a unified decision-making. So I agree with some folks who are still in the audience who made that statement. However, there is a clear division between us. Even our seating arrangement at these board meetings was adjusted by the board president, which unfortunately further emphasizes the divide. Numerous changes were also requested at the organizational meeting by the board leadership without any collaboration with myself or my team. There was no regard for how these requests may hinder the work done daily by our staff, faculty, and in turn negatively impact our students. Change is not a bad thing, but it needs to be implemented in an efficient and respectful manner that has improved outcomes for our students as the focal point. Fittingly, I would like to reiterate my request for more information regarding proposed committees by two members of our Board of Education. It is difficult to participate in proposed committees when no purpose, rationale, or meeting logistics have been provided. There is a clear desire for members of our community to become involved. But without having a basic schedule or understanding, it is difficult to move from philosophical to action. I am reaching out to the collective board to assist me with developing a student-centered superintendent and board of education relationship. The first four weeks of the 2023-2024 school year have been very discouraging from the perspective of my executive team, and we look forward to a much improved relationship with the collective Board of Education for the remainder of the school year. Sorry, I am in the process of planning a retreat for board members who would like to collaboratively move forward to explore their roles and how those roles play an important part in moving our district forward. I understand there is resistance by some of our members. However, please be reminded that the team only functions when there is a full participation and collaboration by all members. So I hope all will decide to attend. I hope to share that date with you next week. We are experiencing low morale, high turnover, turnover, excuse me, and the inability to attract quality candidates because we are attacked consistently by some members of this board. Media reports, including social media posts by the president, have been baseless and do not represent our district in any way. Even with these distractions, I know the priority of the district's educational leadership team will continue to be working towards the greatest outcome for all of our students. As the new school year approaches, we must remain focused on who and what our purpose truly is for, and that is simply every go-back every day. This concludes my update for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Move on to Clerk of the Board, item 6.1, approval of the minutes for the July 18, 2023 meeting. Can I have a...
Oh, I don't have one now.
Okay.
Thank you, Board President. I have the approval of minutes from July 18, 2023, regular meeting.
Can I have a motion in a second? Discussion, no changes? Good. Roll call, please.
Mr. Burgarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Duray? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lamar?
Yes.
Ms. Levinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Pallotti?
Yes.
Ms. Straight-Iran?
Yes.
Ms. Bulleye?
Yes.
That concludes my item, Board President. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Move on to item 7.1, Board President, resolution to adopt policy on the second reading, policy 5201, secondary course credit. Can I have a motion in a second, please? I'm going to turn this over to Policy Chair, Ms. Bulleye.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to explain each one. Thank you for putting it up. So the first one is 5201, and let me say before we start that these have been reviewed by our attorneys. So this first one was reviewed by a large team of people, including frontline workers like teachers, in a process that was called shared decision-making, and this was done last school year. Their proposed changes were not put before the last board for discussion and voting, but are here as a second read tonight. So the first four, I know this is hard to read, but the first four, which thank you, which are number one, are number two, and are number three, are agreed to between the cabinet and the policy committee. Four, number, go down, yep, number four, is the main item of discussion the last time that we met. So one of the, and that regards a rule that's called the 55 rule. One of the objections that was voiced at the last meeting to changing this from four quarters where a student would earn a 55 on the report card even if they never came to school was the idea that there were no safeguards in place if this was to change from four quarters to less than four quarters. We learned firsthand at the end of the last meeting by an NFA principal that there are indeed numerous interventions already in place and that have been in place for quite a while to support the student learning. While it might be believed or wanted that more interventions are helpful, we are assured that the current interventions even include daily communications with students and their parents. So for this policy committee, along with the superintendent, we agreed at the last meeting that the 55 rule can be changed to raise the grade to a 55 in two quarters of a four-quarter class if that student has 85% attendance in those quarters. And for a two-quarter class, a semester class, one quarter could be raised to the 55 if the student has 85% attendance for that quarter. So for a four-quarter class, that 55, those two 55s would be raised the first two quarters that a student falls below the 55. And for a two-quarter or one semester class, that 55, it would be raised to a 55 on the first quarter that that student would fall below that 55 and met that attendance mark. Now although that I said that I believe that the district was in agreement of this change, they may not be at this moment in time. I was told that there was a survey that was done of area schools to explain and determine what they do to compare it to us. what they do to compare it to us. So before I turn the microphone back to Mr. Stridiron to take comments and to take a vote, I need to explain with clarity the difference between a policy and a practice. Newburgh has this policy, which as-is, requires teachers to manually override in the computer system an earned grade up to a fifty-five even if that grade is a zero because the student never attends. If the teacher refuses to alter that grade, they could be subject to disciplinary action. That's a policy. That's what Newburgh has. I did my own policy committee survey, and in the seven schools that I researched, not one of them has a policy like this. Some had practices where it suggested that a grade be not below fifty for one quarter or two. Some had no practice at all. You earn whatever you earn. One actually had a practice that they rolled back at their last board meeting because there's no longer a need for these COVID protections. And one school has a policy whereby if a student misses twenty days or more in an entire year of a class, they may be denied the credits for that class. So those seven districts that I surveyed were Middletown, Pine Bush, Monroe Woodbury, Valley Central, Washingtonville, Pete's Gill, and Schenectady, who was always compared to us on state tests. Mr. President, I give you back the floor for comments and voting.
Thank you, Ms. Bulleye. Any questions or comments from the board members? Dr. Mannicamp?
I'll have Dr. Farrell explain a little bit to what Ms. Bulleye alluded to just now to just give a little bit more of an explanation. Thank you.
In preparation for this item, we requested that our BOCs conduct a survey of all our component districts. Unfortunately, Ms. Lang has not been able to compile that material as of this date. However, we did contact component districts as well as one or two other districts who are not within our BOCs. Cornwall, students receive the earned grade. Albany gives the grade of fifty-five. Catskill, fifty-five. In the District of Florida, quarters one and two are a fifty. Quarters three and four are the actual grade, and the average final grade is an average of all four quarters. In Highland, quarters one and two earn a fifty. Quarters three and four are an actual, and the final grade is an average. In Hudson, fifty-five. Middletown, fifty-five. Menesink, earned grade. Port Jervis, first quarter fifty-five, all others actual. Poughkeepsie, fifty-five. Roundout Valley, first, second, and third quarter fifty, fourth actual. Final is the actual average. Valley Central, fifty. Warwick, first quarter fifty-five, all others actual, and in Tuxedo, the earned grade. As soon as we receive the information from Ms. Lang, from all of our component districts, I will provide that to the superintendent for your information. Thank you.
Ms. Peterson?
I just also want to clarify in the student management system that teachers do not manually override grades. Their grade book, there is a script one that brings it to it, they're not manually overriding the fifty-five. I also just wanted to also make, and it's something that I also said in policy committee, currently Newburgh has over two thousand courses, six through twelve, that this policy will impact. The timing of this is, as the person in charge of the student management system in ensuring the proper calculation of grades, I just want to state that there is going to need, whatever the board chooses, I, as the student information person, is gonna, I'm gonna need time to get the script right on the back end and the course set up. Seeing that we're about maybe three weeks out from school right now, this would be a big feat if this was changed now. So I just want to make the board aware of that.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Mr. Levinstein, Mr. Howard?
So before I just get into this policy, and I'm gonna ask, and this may be for Mr. Forget more than Ms. Bulleye, these policies have changes on it. We have red text. We have red text with a line through it. We have red text that's highlighted. We have red text that's highlighted with a struck through line, and we have green text. What are all these things? Are they add-ons? Are they subtractions? Are they recommendations?
Thank you. Mr. Levinstein, so as Ms. Bulleye shared, the shared decision-making team, there are representatives from each of the bargaining units that participate in a policy review as recommended by the president of each of the bargaining units. This happens to be one of the Newburgh Teachers Association policies that they wanted reviewed. So they put representatives on the team, administration was on the team, central office was on the team, as well as CSEA. What you see in red are the recommendations from that particular team. The recommendations to the superintendent. The superintendent then takes them as guidance to make a final recommendation that would go to the policy committee. So when you see these changes, the red are the changes that resulted from the shared decision-making team. The strikeouts in black are the policy committee, and when you combine them together, it's the collective conversation that the board has to have at this point. When you look at item number four, we worked pretty hard to get that fifty-five for all four marking periods. The one piece that I do believe in is the addition of the eighty-five percent attendance rate onto that, because I believe students have to be there and present to learn, and an eighty-five percent attendance rate is aligned with our eligibility policy. Even though it's lower than the chronic absenteeism rate, we're still given some leeway there. I'm okay with the eighty-five percent attendance rate. We want students seated to learn, but we also want them to be able to learn with equitable resources. So if I, if I were to consider one minor shift, it would be fifty-five for each marking period with the eighty-five percent, but the conversation of the committee and as a team, when you work as a team, you come up with a recommendation, the recommendation is for two marking periods at this point. I would love to see it stay at four.
Mr. Howard?
Yeah, so there's a lot to unpack here. So I heard what Ms. Bulleye said, and so my question to the superintendent and to the deputy superintendent, deputy superintendent who is the liaison on the policy committee, there's a lot of changes here. What are we voting on? What are the recommendations from central office, from the superintendent in regards to this policy? The red, the yellow, the black, the line through?
It's all of, all of that, Mr. Howard. So as Ms. Bulleye did share with us, the first item under number one, obtaining a final passing grade of sixty-five, what we're adding in, Mr. Niblo, if you could pull that down, please. Thank you. Under the first item where it's quarterly common assesses, assessments if applicable, that's an add to that. Yeah, that's good. Item number two, we're changing the word participation to work. In item number three, we got a little bit more specific with pre-approved college visits so that it doesn't, it doesn't remove the opportunity for the student to take the test. If they're on a college visit and the test is being administered at that time, it needs to be in a mutually agreed upon time that upon return, that student takes it and has the opportunity for it. Those are, those are what we're voting on.
Okay, when you say we, who are you referring to? The policy committee, central office, or the group?
I'm saying we are all in agreement with what I've shared to this point.
Okay, okay.
So one, two, three, Ms. Bulleye, correct me if I'm wrong, one, two, three, we are in total agreement with. Number one, under the following or applicable requirements regarding secondary school courses, we did agree that we would not use the regions as a final exam grade. We removed that.
So what's the yellow?
We're in agreement with that.
Why, why something highlighted in yellow?
That was so that we could, that was actually for Ms. Novatney and myself to understand what the changes were, highlighted at that particular time.
Okay, okay, okay.
So we're in agreement with the one, we're in agreement with the number two, we're in agreement with number three, we're concerned about number four, but we did agree to push this forward.
So what are your concerns with number four? And why?
Only because I believe it should remain, when we did the equity review and we, we applied the equity review to this policy when we made the change back in, I think it was back in like two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, where we applied the fifty-five as the lowest grade for all four marking periods, we felt that that was equitable because not all students have the same resources and support that other students have. Where I think we can come together on this between Dr. Campbell and myself, if we leave it at fifty-five for all, for marking periods, but add the eighty-five percent attendance, we would be very comfortable with that. It now states that the recommendation on the floor for your consideration is for the first two marking periods. We would prefer to see it at all four, but we did agree to bring forward for your consideration the first two marking periods.
So, Mr. President, if we agree with the changes except number four, we want it to remain as-is, how do we vote on this? How, can you à la carte this, or is this a solid one policy?
Right now, number four states that it would be a floating two quarters of fifty-five. So if the student has a great first quarter, they get a seventy-five, eighty-five, they get an eighty-five.
Right, but that wasn't my question.
I'll just explain it, because if, if the second and third quarters are bad, you know, something happens and they get, you know, bad grade, they can take that fifty-five as long as they have an eighty-five percent attendance.
Okay, so my question to you.
If you wanted to change this.
What would we do? Can you, can we ask? Mr. Shaw?
You would have to make a motion to amend number four to whatever you're amending, and then you'd have to get five votes to amend.
Is that correct, Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you. I would love.
Danny, Mr. Levinstein has a question.
Boy, okay, so, so I, I understand the frustration of parents or, or teachers that their kids that get a fifty-five that didn't show up or didn't do any work, and I'm, I'm amazed that central office is agreeing to eighty-five percent attendance to bring that up. And my, my point would be, if we're going from what we are now is fifty-five for four quarters with no attendance requirement, to now add an attendance requirement, I think for the four quarters might be good, because we're, we're really taking a drastic leap going, requiring eighty-five percent. And I think it should be for four quarters, should be reviewed at the end of the year. Did, did this work well or not? So, so doing what, what Mr. Howard wants, I think would be a better situation. Thank you.
Mr. Lamar, Ms. Palladi?
Yeah, I'm just, when was this fifty-five rule as it stands now put in place? It was prior to the pandemic, but I can't give you the exact date. I would have to go back through the notes and the modifications and changes. I believe, Ms. Bulleye, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it went back as far as two thousand eighteen.
And has our graduation rate gone up as a result of it, or has student performance gone up as a result of it?
It's hard to measure that.
Ms. Palladi?
So I'd like to know more about this, number one, the students will not take the quarterly common assessments, and I'd like to hear from either Dr. Manning Campbell or Mr. Forget or both. Isn't that a benchmark assessment to inform teachers before they get too far and they can't take the regions and they'll fail? So wouldn't that be detrimental?
Are you referring to number one with regards to the regions exams?
In number one where it says the students will not take the quarterly common assessments, aren't common assessments something that teachers use as an informative tool?
Absolutely, and they will be taking the common quarterly assessments in all non-regents classes.
But if we vote on this policy, they would not be taking the quarterly assessment?
No, they would for non-regents courses. I believe number one that you're reading is only referring to regions.
Okay, and is that the recommendation by the superintendent?
We currently do not have regions exams. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Farrell, we do not have common quarterly assessments created for regions courses at this time?
We do have quarterly assessments for our regions courses, but our students do not take a fourth quarter common assessment because the regions exam is given.
Can you clarify for me, were teachers involved in the design of the quarterly common assessments?
Yes, they were.
They were?
They were. All quarterly common assessments were prepared by staff members approximately two years ago, and they were reviewed and revised this past year.
Then I would recommend that that be considered.
So that would mean that if, if we vote on this, those informative benchmarks would not give our teachers the tools to, to reteach that material or address deficits before they get to the regions. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Howard and Ms. Bulleye?
Thank you, Mr. President. So taking into account the, the equity questions that Mr. Forget had discussed in regards to the differences that students that we, we deal with in our student population, also considering the eighty-five percent, I think the eighty-five percent is something that's good, because what it does, it allows us to know that the kids are in school and they are trying. I, I would not want to have this available to children or scholars who just don't, do not come to school. That's not what we want to do. That's the narrative that was out there. We want to give kids, no, we don't want to give kids anything. We want them to show that they're in school, that they have an attendance that's allowing them to possibly get the grades that we want them to get, but if they're not getting those grades and they are, they are in full attendance, then we need to address it even further. What is the real problem going on here? But I think that gives us an opportunity to let the scholars know, you must be in school. You must be in school. That being said, I would like to amend the current resolution to include the, number four, the red, the red part that's scratched out. Do, do I need to read that, Mr. Shaw? So I would like to amend the motion, amend the motion to include the lowest grade on a student's report card would be fifty-five for the first quarter only. If the average is below fifty-five, it will be indicated in an annotated annotation next to the fifty-five. The teacher will record the actual grades for all signs in the learning management system. The sum of the score at the end of the marking period will reflect the grade no less than fifty-five. Correct, I'm sorry, yes, 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 my bad. With the eighty-five.
So the amendment is the actual, instead of having the two quarters of fifty-five, you want four quarters of fifty-five?
Correct, with the eighty-five percent attendance requirement.
Mr. Forget?
So can I just make one clarification? I, I think what I heard was a request for consideration under number one. The request was in the yellow highlight, it will now read, the students will take the quarterly common assessments. The word "not" will be removed from item number one, and I understand from Mr. Howard's recommendation that on item number four, the change would reflect in yellow, the grade of fifty-five will be applied to all four quarters in which the student's course grade is below fifty-five. That, I believe, is what I heard as a requested amendment. Thank you.
The requested amendment was for number four. Let's deal with one at a time.
Okay.
I think it's probably better to do one at a time at this point. So the amendment is for number four, to go for four quarters of fifty-five but keeping yet eighty-five percent attendance. Now we have a second. Is there anybody has a question on this? Mr. Burgarelli? Ms. Bulleye?
I wanted to add a different viewpoint on the quarterlies, but we're not voting on the quarterlies, so I can.
Yes, Ms. Burgarelli?
Uh, my question, and I'm an educator here. We're making these changes, and we're gonna be affecting our nine through twelve grade students who kind of don't get do-overs when they mess up. Why wouldn't we propose this for our six, seven, eights, where we can let them do this under a new system and sort of, it can grow with them if it's successful instead of, you know, doing it all across the board like that?
This is six through twelve.
Well, that's what I'm saying, why are we, our high school students, those grades are their forever grades. Our six, seven, eights are practicing to be high school students, you know, so why wouldn't we make these policies? So, why wouldn't we make these policy changes with the lower grade students, and then after a year, we have data that doesn't adversely affect them during their high school career? It doesn't penalize them for having a bad tenth grade year if this is the first time they're getting this. I, I don't know, you can't have two different standards for two different levels of grade, and then if this is a successful trial, then it grows with that student. That is the policy now going forward for that grade. You know what I mean? Am I being clear?
So, you want to have a separate policy for six and seventh, because eighth grade students can take regions courses?
Middle school students, a, a starting point, not just, we got, Common Core got dumped on us, and the whole district, every grade had to deal with it. You know what I mean? So, we, do we have the ability, we have an opportunity here to do something new and let it grow with the kids? I, I don't know if I'm, you know, speaking stuff that's not normal, or, I don't know.
The, Mr., Dr. Manning Campbell.
So, I, I think this should probably go back to policy. This is why this was important, not to rush these policies upon entering. So, I, you know, we heard a lot of commentary about when we went to school, it's not how school was twenty years ago. We have different experiences. We were literally impacted by a pandemic. So, one of the items that Mr. Bergarelli is, um, recommending is that perhaps we do it at our middle level and build students up. Rest assured that any policy that goes forward, I am going to have a town hall and recommend the folks who are part of this policy to explain to the parents, because this is going to be different, it's going to be impactful, and we need to understand how we explain and address to our community the changes that we're making. So, that is a good recommendation, but I do think that it needs more, um, massaging and explanation, and perhaps we pick a starting point that we can begin.
Right now, we have a motion on the floor, the second, to amend number four, to go to four quarters of fifty-five. Any other comments before we take a roll call? Ms. Palitti.
Before we take a roll call, can we make a motion to table this to go to a third read before we vote on anything, any amendments? Would that be possible?
You'd need a second on that, and then no discussion and vote.
So, if it's tabled, it's going to stay the way it is, where no attendance requirement at all?
I, I would like to amend certain things in this, and I think that we need to go to a third read, because we're, we're kind of wasting time going in circles here. And, and like Dr. Manning Campbell said, we could have a town hall and get more input.
So, you, so is a motion to table, the second, there's no discussion for tabling, so we have to take a roll call for tabling? No, no, he says you don't have to take it off. Yep.
I have a, I, I thought we were voting on one through three, and that four was going to be.
That Ms. Palitti voted to table the entire.
Oh, okay. I missed that, thank you.
Roll call? Um, Mr. Levinstein's second.
Mr. Lamar? Ms. Levinstein? Ms. Palitti? Mr. Stridiron?
No.
Ms. Belay?
No.
Mr. Bergarelli?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae? Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Howard? Motion to table.
Motion is tabled. We go to seven point two, resolution to adopt policy on the second reading, fifty-two oh five, credit recovery and credit accrual programs for secondary students. Turn it over to Ms. Belay for, for, uh, a reading.
Can we just get that policy up, please? So, this is the second policy from shared decision-making. So, again, a group, large team of people, including frontline workers, those teachers, looked at this policy, and who's in agreement, are we in agreement? I'll try to make the colors make sense. So, for one through nine, so that would be at the top where it says grades seven through twelve, the next line says grades seven through twelve in red, uh, the bullet, um, amending that to say, uh, for scheduling conflict, credit and recovery, grades seven through twelve, seven through twelve, going down to the makeup unit, seven, he just covered it right there, um, and then keep going, that first paragraph right there, other administrator, that one, um, and then in the numbers, one, two, three, four, and five, we are in agreement. Six, by the way, seven, uh, on here in the green, this is from the attorney. Six qualifies distance learning, so back to my script so I don't forget anything. Uh, the changes on six and seven that you're looking at right now on page two, and number five on page three, are about making distance learning and digital learning available to only medically fragile students and students who are legally unable to attend school in person. The addition of that phrase, students who are legally unable to attend school in person, is related to giving level one, two, and three sexual offenders the required education by law. So, when we get to that policy, I'll explain to you, if you are a student who is a level one, two, three sexual offender, you would get that learning online as opposed to inside of a school. So, that's why that was added. And I hand it back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Belay. Any questions on this policy? Ms. Palitti.
What, what are the recommendations, um, by senior staff on this? Because it seems like it's a little, a little tight. Could, could you speak to that?
I think the only, the hesitation we have is in, in the elimination of digital learning for credit accrual, as well as for, um, credit recovery. Uh, digital learning is something that is used in almost all school districts at this particular point in, across the country. Um, it gives an opportunity for those students who are excelling to even accelerate further. I think what we need would be a very strong regulation and, uh, an adjustment to the handbook that creates the opportunity for integrity in the way we implement the model, and then it needs to be monitored and, and assessed and audited to ensure that we, we have that criteria established. Um, I understand the concern from our committee on, you know, the possibility of digital learning, but I think that as administrators, if we were to implement a very tight model that's audited and reviewed, I think our students would benefit from having that as an option. Taking this away as an option, again, our students need additional resources, they need additional opportunities, and for those students who could benefit from this for credit accrual, let them go, let them have it, let, let them succeed. And for those students that are struggling during the marking periods, and, and they want to try to keep up with their studies, giving them an opportunity for the, to take digital learning to, uh, to, to make up those credits, I, I think we should allow them to do that, again, with very tight protocols for, uh, monitoring the system.
Just to mention on number eight, the entire line that got stricken out was, I believe, a decision from the shared decision-making team that was assembled, was it over the summer that you had?
So, I just want to make a comment on that. Um, those, that team gets together and makes recommendations for consideration by the superintendent, and is clearly stated in the shared decision-making plan that that's the purpose of it. It's up to the superintendent to consider those recommendations from those, that multiple stakeholder group. It's not just a rubber stamp by the superintendent, because the super, superintendent has a very different lens than one group versus one group, versus one group. The superintendent has to take into account parents and families, students, community, educators, everyone. So, the superintendent reviews, makes her decision, and then we move forward to the policy committee for their final decision.
I have a question.
Mr. Howard, and then Ms. Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, until those tighter protocols can be put in place, would it be wise to send this back to committee and then bring it back? So, I would like to move to table this, uh, resolution, Mr. President.
So, you can say.
I just want to, all right, I was going to point out something important, but that's okay. No, I can't say it now.
Yep, there's a second, so we can't talk. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Levinstein? Ms. Palitti?
I'm, I'm sorry, what, what are we pointing?
Mr. Stridiron?
No.
Ms. Belay?
No.
Mr. Bergarelli?
Yes.
Mr. DeRae? Ms. Green? Mr. Howard? Mr. Lamar? Motion passed the table.
Seven point three, resolution to adopt on the second reading, policy fifty-four fifty, notification of sex offenders. Ms. Belay, please.
Okay. So, this policy, and this is straight from the attorneys, this policy was originally written for paroled, conditionally released, or on probation, level one, two, and three sexual offenders. And it was adopted on October twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen. There is a special circumstances clause in this NECSD policy that allows for level three sexual offenders to be present on school grounds and in school buildings under particular conditions. And the policy as it exists, if you could just raise that up, if you look at the bullets there, under special conditions, this is the existing policy, the sex offender, it would be allowed if, if it's a registered student, a participant or employee of the district, or if the sex offender is a parent, a guardian of a student. That's with special circumstances. This is not a shared decision-making. I pulled this policy for review as the chair, and it went through this board's first policy committee meeting a few weeks ago, and then it was discussed at the last meeting. It is the policy committee's proposal to have the special circumstances clause removed there, thereby barring from school property, all level one, two, and three sexual offenders who are on parole, conditionally released, or on probation, and this has been cleared by our attorneys. The removal of the special circumstances clause would not interfere in any way with a student who is a sexual offender's right to receive an education. The policy that you just tabled had the clause to allow that student to receive that education online. Without that option there, the district would find a way, if this is passed, to give that student that education outside of school. The removal would not interfere with a parent or guardian who has a sexual offender's right to attend graduation, as this could be done virtually. The removal would not interfere with any sexual offender's right to vote, as absentee ballot voting is available, and the, in the actual law itself which drives this, sexual offenders have the right to vote at a polling place after seven P.M. The amended policy as proposed would contain the first three paragraphs only and remove the special circumstances clause. Mr. Shaw, is there anything you need to clarify before I give it back to Mr. Stridiron?
I'd just like to clarify that this policy would be legal, should you adopt it in this form, and it would also be legal if you wanted to allow the discretion that's inherent in what is being stricken. Uh, so, from the legal perspective, either way would be legal, so it's a board decision.
Mr. Howard? So, uh, Mr. Shaw, speak to me, the special circumstances, why are they, why were they put here, and for what purpose? And what does the special circumstances allow to happen and prevent from happening, prevent from happening?
There really isn't a bright line test for the special circumstances as this is written. That would be within the discretion of the superintendent and the parole officer?
So, my question is to the superintendent now. Could you, could you tell us, or give an example, what, how this special circumstance would be used or could be used?
So, it would give me an opportunity to speak to the parole officer if that situation does arise. So, what's harmful for me, um, and just to make the record clear, because I know that there's been a lot of buzz, um, inaccurate buzz on social media, that we're letting in a certain type of people, and children are in the audience or watching, um, into the district, that's not happened, that's not happened since I've been here, right? So, a special circumstance, um, as the superintendent was, would to work with the parole agency to see if there was an allotment of anyone coming into our district, right? And the special circumstances is one that's given to districts, that gives me the authority as a superintendent. And I'd like to remain, I'd like to have that authority because it impacts our students. The, the most hurtful, um, as the educational leader, is to have a child, a seven-year-old child, everyone else is coming in for a ceremony, and that child's parent is not allowed, um, I'm not even given the opportunity to make special arrangements for that parent if such an event did occur.
So, Mr. Shaw, is this special circumstance unique to the Newburgh Law City School District, or is this special circumstance used throughout the state?
That's very common, and I think it derives from the New York State School Boards Association Policy Service, and the same may be true of the Erie Bosse Service. I haven't been able to, uh, locate that yet, but.
Could you repeat what you said about NISBA? I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
Can you repeat what you said about NISBA?
Oh, well, NISBA is the New York State School Boards Association. They have a policy department, a legal department, and they share policies at your expense, you pay for the service, and probably hundreds of other districts do as well. And again, this is a local decision to be made, whether you want the special circumstances exception or not.
Ms., Mr. Levinstein?
Madam Superintendent and Mr. President, I have some questions to get clarification for myself, and maybe others, about the district's sex offender policy. The impression given from postings on social media, including postings by current board members, is that the policy in its current form is that the superintendent would allow and does allow level three sex offenders to teach and interact with the children and have free access to our school buildings to roam as they wish. These postings encourage others to continue and expand on this false narrative. A discussion of policy, which is our responsibility, is something that should be done, but not in the social media realm where facts are scant and misinformation is abundant. I'm trying to understand how we got here, Mr. President. It seemed that the superintendent's special permission was added to this policy on October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, and after it was discussed at the October fourth, two thousand seventeen, policy committing, you were the chairperson. On October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, you made a motion to move this resolution, resolution forward for a vote, and you voted for the change for this policy, along with the, all the other board members present. Mr. President, you shepherded this change in two thousand seventeen as the policy chairman, and then you voted for it. If you change your stance on this policy... If you change your stance on this policy, that is certainly acceptable. What I'm trying to understand is that you appeared on a news program and stated that the superintendent can, or will, can allow, or will allow sexual, level-three sex offenders in our buildings as employees. Why do you and Ms. Vice President spew misleading information which only is designed to create hysteria and build up your media grandstanding? So, my questions to the superintendent are, can you tell me if there are any level-three sex offenders? You allow to interact with students in our building? Would you ever allow it? Can you tell us a scenario that you might think special permission would be granted, and the monitoring logistics that would be associated with it? Is the change today being proposed removing the superintendent's discretion to allow access? What would be your recommendation on this policy? Leaving it as written, or accepting the proposed changes from the policy committee?
Alright. So, I would propose leaving it as it's written to give me the authority as the educational leader to make decisions for the district. Um, I would ask Mr. Stridion to respond to the other questions because I am not sure where he receives his information from in terms of that I'm allowing, um, certain individuals. So, I'll leave that to the board leadership to describe and explain where they got that information and why they would be on local media and on social media explaining that. Um, in addition to that, any, um, I want, you know, people to understand, everyone who works in the district undergoes a background check, right? So, in order for them to come in, they have to be cleared. We don't just hire people. People don't just show up on our front steps and we hire them. There's an extensive background check. So, I really, you know, I take offense to being called out erroneously and inaccurately, um, in terms of what's happening in the district. So, I, you know, I, you can, Mr. Stridion and Ms. Pallai could answer those questions because they perhaps have that information. I do not.
I'm gonna respond to that. First of all, the policy as written, I'm asking for a legal interpretation of this. Does the policy as written with the special circumstances, could the district hire a level-three under this current policy?
Only if SED would give clearance, um, and they do apply certain standards to formerly convicted personnel. So, um, it would have to be cleared through SED, and then it's possible for that to occur.
The only thing I said regarding this policy was that the policy as written could allow a level-three to be in our schools as a student, as a parent, a visitor, or an employee, which is the way the policy is written. I don't know if there are any level-one, twos, or threes in the schools because the last time I asked about six months ago, when I brought up the policy again, was that, the answer was, "Not to my knowledge." Back in two thousand seventeen, I fought this policy two times before it came to the policy committee. On the third time, what happened was, they changed the numbering, and they put fifteen policies in at the same time. My bad. I made a mistake. And ever since then, I've been trying to get it changed by asking the board to put it on the agenda. And since I didn't have the votes, I couldn't get it on the agenda. I have it on the agenda now, and it seems like this board wants to keep it the way it is, which is the board's prerogative. But that's the truth. I said on the News Twelve, speaking for myself, I said, "I don't want level-threes in our schools." That was my comment. I was speaking for myself, and I am allowed to as a citizen, and actually as an individual board member, to speak to the media as per board policy. Mr. Howard?
Actually, for clarification, the article referred to you as president of the Newburgh Law City School District Board of Education. Let me finish. And you state that you, since two thousand seventeen, you've tried to put this on the floor. I would love to see where you put, moved to put a motion on the floor to rescind this policy, or change this policy, and it was voted down by the board. I know that not to be true. In the sixteen, seventeen, it has never come on the floor, and it has never been voted down by the board. And I challenge you to show me when that happened.
I don't think I did, but I asked, I, no, I'm talking about, I stood at the podium, and I've made, I've, I've even sent emails asking for this policy to be changed because I made a mistake in two thousand seventeen. I admit my mistakes.
So, Mr. President?
And I, as far as the media calling me the board president, I don't control what the media says. I said, "I don't want level-threes in our buildings."
Okay.
And that is the statement. And for people to say that I was saying something else, that's a lie. Ms. Palladi?
When it comes to policy, it really is about legal, and there's no room for "I feel," "I think." It's what is the current policy? What is the law? And what is the intent? And whether you told this to Blaise Gomez or not, you were represented for all of us, and you know that. That's a dodge. You're not the spokesperson for this district. Dr. Manning Campbell is.
Board policy provides me the ability to speak as an individual board member to the media. It does.
Not on behalf of the board?
It actually does.
No, it does not. What it says...
There is a board, there's a policy for board president
that speaks for the board, but I actually was not speaking for the board or the district. I was speaking for myself.
Okay, so, Mr. President, the policy actually states you can speak as the president on behalf of the board when we make a statement, when we make a statement. Did you confer with the regular, all the board members before you made that statement?
I didn't speak for the board.
So, you...
I spoke for myself as an individual. But policy eleven thirty, news media relations, says the board president is designated as a spokesperson for the board when the board is making a statement on an issue. I wasn't making a statement on an issue. I was making a statement for myself. I made a statement for myself, just like when you...
We all saw it. It was on the news.
I didn't, I said, "I don't want level-three sex offenders in our schools." Did I say "I" as a board, as a board president? No.
When they introduced you, did they say the president of the Newburgh Law City School District Board of Education?
That's what they said on the screen or whatever it was. That wasn't me. I told the news reporter, "I'm speaking for myself."
Did you correct him? Did you ask for a correction?
No, why should I ask for a question? I don't even care.
Because they misrepresented you.
I don't care. The news media does whatever they want. I get misrepresented all the time. You want me to go back and do all this other stuff? Ms. Palladi?
No, Mr. President, you do whatever you want. You want us all to follow the rules, but you don't want to follow the rules. That's the problem.
What rule did I break? What policy did I break, Ms. Palladi? The policy says right here. Yes, Ms. Green?
I have a question. So, are we voting on this policy tonight? Because I need to know what we're voting on. So, we are voting to say if we want level-three sex offenders in the building or not? Is that what we're voting on?
No.
What, what is it that we're actually voting on? Because with all this conversation, I'm confused.
It's taking the special circumstances out of the current policy so that there is no discretion by the superintendent or the parole officer in joint agreement to allow sex offenders in our buildings.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So, we are voting on whether we want to have this discretion of allowing level-three sex offenders in the building or not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please. Mr. Levinstein has a question?
Just a quick comment, and, um, Mr. President, I agree with you. I don't want a level-three sex offenders in the building. I think most people in this room don't want that. That's not what we're, we're voting on. We would prefer that not happening. We would prefer there not be level-three sex offenders, but there are times when they may be extraordinary, and we're leaving it up to the judge. If we left this alone, we're leaving it up to the judgment of the superintendent. It doesn't mean, and of course, that's the way it will be portrayed in the media, that if we vote to leave this in, that we're, want level-three sex offenders in, in the building. And that's not the case.
Can I ask a legal, a question? If we left this the way it is, and the superintendent has a discretion, would there be any kind of notification process if a level-one, two, or three sex offender was allowed to be in the schools? What notification process is required by this special circumstance?
That would be up to the superintendent to decide how to give notice based upon the circumstances.
Thank you. Ms. Palladi?
And again, before this is painted in a false narrative, if we do not adopt this new policy, this is not saying that we want sex offenders in our buildings. This is reverting to the actual law that was given to us by New York State School Board Association, and preventing ourselves from potential liability and lawsuits that would take money away from the children in our district.
Mr. Lamar?
Have there ever been any lawsuits prior to this policy being implemented resulting from someone's inability to attend a school event, graduation, et cetera?
I can't recall any lawsuits in any district over the years I've been in practice.
Got a question regarding the, um, access to the buildings. When there is a parent-teacher conference, the building is pretty much open, and there is no use of the Raptor system, is there?
This is why, this is why a conversation should be made before we go to the media and say things that we're not sure about. I'm waiting for, um, you, Mr. Stridion and Ms. Pallai, to clarify because clearly you know something more than I do because you stated that you want to remove this based on circumstantial evidence. So, I can't respond to that because I think that you know more than I do.
No, I'm just asking a question based on there was a statement made by Mr. Levinstein that everyone that comes into the building goes through the Raptor system. I just don't want sex offenders in our buildings. And whether discretion is the superintendent or not, by taking this out, it makes it clear no sex offenders in our buildings under any circumstances. It's up to the board to decide what they want to do. Mr. Howard and Mr. Bergarelli?
Just for the clarification, education for everyone here, and everyone who's going to listen to this meeting. I don't think there's one board member out of the nine that wants level-three sex offenders in our buildings, level-three sex offenders in proximity of our kids. That is not what this is about. I think the question at hand is removing the authority of the superintendent to make that decision. We pay her a good penny to do her job. And I think that under those circumstances, that addition right there would be safe with me understanding that that would never happen unless there are extenuating circumstances. But I would like to add something to this that if this does occur, there is a circumstance, that the board be notified immediately.
The current policy does not include that.
Said I would like to add that to the policy. That if that conflict, that situation occurs, that if she makes that decision, the board is informed immediately that that took place.
Mr. Bergarelli?
I have to say too, I do not want sex offenders in my schools. I'm the only one, I guess, didn't say it yet. Uh, my only issue with this is we are taking away the special circumstances. We are taking away the ability for a superintendent to make this decision with information from the court system, from the probation officers who have information that is not foilable, that we are not privy to. Records can be sealed, all that stuff that happens. So, she's making an informed decision, and this policy, the way it's originally written, gives her the ability to just gather all the information and make an appropriate decision. That's everything I'm saying.
Any other questions? Roll call. We're voting on the policy as written.
I have, I have a question. Wait.
You're taking out the special circumstances. Ms. Green?
No, we, Mr. Howard and, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name. But Mr. Howard and Mr. Bergarelli asked that if this is not taken out, that if the superintendent was given information as Mr. Berg, Mr. B., as Mr. B. said, that we would be informed of this. I'm just asking because I'm trying to get clarification in terms of trying to see both sides. So, if she had an extenuating circumstance that would be conveyed to the board, and then what? We would decide if we agree with her or not? I'm, I'm not, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm not understanding this.
The policy does not allow the board to override the decision of the superintendent. We could be made aware of it, but we couldn't do anything.
Okay, so, if we, we would just be made aware of it? So, it's not a thing of whether we agree with it or not? It's just that we would just be made aware of it?
What does that do?
That's what I'm asking. If we, okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't do anything other than give us information. Mr. Howard, I only said that because that's what you, you, you said that. I'm asking for notification for the public.
For the public?
Notification. What was, what's good if the board knows, but the student that's sitting in a room with a level-three sex offender, how does that help?
Not what I requested, so, I said the board...
You just want the board to know, but not the public?
The board to be made aware.
But not the public?
Don't, don't try to...
No, I'm...
That's what I'm saying.
What's the board gonna do about it?
We will know that our superintendent made an extenuating circumstances in regard to a request.
Ms. Pallai?
Just gonna add my personal viewpoint. I don't care about a special circumstance. If I'm a parent and there's sexual three offenders in my kid's class, I don't want them there. That's my point of view. Under any special circumstance, if you've done a crime of that magnitude, I don't want you near my child. Thank you.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, have there been any requests of this magnitude, uh, recently or over the last few years?
Since I've been here, no. But I know that Mr. Stridion has made statements that I'm allowing rapists into our schools, so I would need him to clarify.
I didn't say that. I never said to allow rapists in our schools. What is this?
So, Mr. Stridion may have additional information.
Can we vote on this?
Roll call. Voting on the, as is, to remove the special circumstances?
Mr. Lamar? Mr. Levinstein? Ms. Palladi? Mr. Stridion?
Yes.
Ms. Pallai?
Yes.
Mr. Bergarelli?
No.
Mr. DeRae? Ms. Green? Mr. Howard? Did not pass, did not get adopted. I got five more.
Seven point four, resolution to adopt policy on first reading, policy forty-five twenty- Resolution to adopt policy on first reading policy forty-five twenty-six point one, Internet safety. Ms. Boulay.
Okay, so this is the fourth of the night. This is not part of the shared decision-making. It's one that I put up for discussion. And what you're looking at here, there's two sections. So, the Policy Board, Policy Committee, is looking to tighten this policy to ensure that our students are not exposed to visual depictions on the Internet that are obscene, or child pornography, et cetera, as defined by the Children's Internet Protection Act. The Policy Committee proposes removing the current underlined red section, so that's the part that's up right now with the underlines, which allows the disabling of the filters that block out these sites and images under certain conditions and replacing it with more defined language that outlines the only times that the filters can be removed. So, the change says, senior staff supervision. Any such measures may be relaxed or disabled to the extent necessary for law enforcement review and investigation and for students in AP college classes or in criminal justice classes required to do specific research per the curriculum. The relaxing or disabling of technology protection measures for the purpose of viewing child pornography or other obscene content is prohibited. And this was checked, double-checked, and lines added in by our attorneys. And then if we could go down to the next change, this was added. This is a section straight from the law itself that the attorney suggested be added to this. And it reads, "The viewing or transmission of obscene materials or child pornography in school, on school grounds, or from and to school or school grounds is strictly prohibited. Anyone privy to information pertaining to such activities must report such activity to the superintendent who will cause an investigation to be conducted. Law enforcement authorities will be contacted as appropriate." And again, this was added by the attorney. I give it back to you.
Any quest, actually, did we do a second motion in a second on this? Yes. Okay. Any questions on this one? Ms. Peters.
So, as discussed at Policy Committee, I just want to also reiterate for the rest of the board. The district as a part of the Department of Education is under FCC guidelines and some of those guidelines are the Child Internet Protection Act. So, this requires education systems to have certain filters that screen out child pornography and obscene content. The district takes two different filtering measures. We have the basic Child Protection Act that all districts must adhere to. And then we also have an in-district filtering system called GoGuardian. And it's something that parents were notified in the fall. It's specifically designed for education to ensure that not only are we making sure that we are filtering the content that falls within the Child Protection Act, but also other materials that may come through. It's designed for education and allows the filtering content of Internet sites. We also talked a little bit about the relaxation of that. We don't relax filters for Internet. There's a process that happens with my senior network person and myself if there is a content that needs to be relaxed. Oftentimes, this does happen in college and AP courses because the content is college level and AP. But the district does take every measure to ensure that we are filtering to the best of our ability. We have aligned ourselves with some of the industry-leading protection in GoGuardian. It's, you know, a nationwide program designed specifically for this purpose.
Mr. Levinstein and Ms. Pelletti.
So, I'll just ask senior staff, this changes here, will it affect what we do as a district and how?
So, there's two different proposed changes. I do have, you know, the first part of it, this is, this is kind of currently what we do. The only concern I have is just the relaxing of content for AP or college-level courses or criminal justice courses. There could be high school-level content in U.S. history that could be seen as obscene. And I know that the curriculum people can assist, to assist you on that. The current filters that we have, there hasn't been a time where I've had to relax filters. So, teachers plan their lessons, they look for their resources, and I have not had a request since I've been in this position to lessen that because GoGuardian and the current filtering products that we use do such a good job of making sure that we are in compliance with the FCC. We are also in compliance with this policy. That's what our network filter was based around.
So, how could, how are you going to implement this policy? If this policy goes forward, how would you implement it?
Well, I think the.
Turn the filter more? I mean, how does that happen?
I don't think that there would for the first part of it. I'm not, I don't, I don't currently have a way that I would implement it because it's based on the filters that I have to do by law. I would just review what my current filters are, filters are in GoGuardian, which are recommended based on this policy. So, I'll reconfirm that that is occurring. What my, the other part of the concern would have to be the second part where I would have to come up with some monitoring system for students and staff to report and then an investigation would have to be concluded. So, if there was a report or someone reported based on this policy, if it was to go into effect, I would have to work along with building-level leadership and around a notification system if something is seen for us to then go investigate and then whether it's a staff member, it's an HR concern, if it's a student member, it could be a code of conduct violation. So, I would, I would have to implement that.
But that should be done now. I mean, if someone's, I think that policy should be in effect.
It is.
Whether this has changed or not.
It is in effect now. It's a part of the regulation. So, to this policy, there's a regulation that goes with this policy. And within that regulation, it does state that those things should be reported. There have been several times this year that my team and I have had to assist in some type of student behavioral issue that has it. So, this is just a reinforcing of that, but the, will cause an investigation to be conducted. So, in, so on every report, there would have to be a mandatory, whether it was staff or student, a mandatory investigation.
Ms. Pelletti then Ms. Green. Do you have a question, Ms. Green? After, Ms. Pelletti then Ms. Green.
So, are there any negative implications to changing this policy that we're not seeing? Ms. Peterson, could you see any?
I'm worried about, and I don't know the CNI, I'm worried about the high school-level curriculum component of it where it just states that only AP and college-level students are criminal justice. So, if I was a student, I know that we had student presenters that were not a part of AP or college-level that did a lot of presentations and they did a lot of research on things a couple of weeks ago, I wouldn't be able, if there was a content to open, which rarely happens, and I just want the board to know, I've not released any or lowered any filters. But I worry about just saying that AP and college-level students can have access to higher-level thinking. Like, that's something for me is a little concerning, that there could be, you know, I know many teachers that in, with regular regents-level students, have them access content that may interest them, maybe could be considered college-level. So, that would be my only concern.
Ms. Green.
I was going to ask a question about something similar to Ms. Pelletti in terms of, is it possible that some type of information can be construed as what they want to take out? That's what I'm asking. Because if, they are saying that they don't want certain unsavory information or stuff being brought up on a computer. Are you saying that it's possible that with this research that these kids do, that something can be considered along those lines? That's what I'm asking.
So, for instance, right now, there's one place, there's one time that I had to relax, or I had to allow access to was our Maris program, for instance. It's cybersecurity. In order for our students to be able to access certain parts of some cybersecurity content, there was, that process was done, right? So, when something is labeled obscene on the Internet, it's not necessarily that it's violent. It could just be a backend coding thing, right? So, we have coders that put different syntax in that can, can block in our filters because of the syntax of the code. We have programmers from all over the world and things translate differently. So, there's some times where I have to say work in collaboration with Maris or P-Tech to make sure that those sites can be allowed for our coding program. When it comes to obscene curricular content, I haven't had to do that. But that's the only time in collaboration with our college partners.
Mr. Lamar then Mr. Levinstein.
Just, but the example that you're stating would be covered under this, correct? Because it's college-level or AP?
That one would be. But if I have a, if I have an in-district computer programming course that is accessing content that's not college-level, I would not be able to do that.
So, I don't see a lot of change in this and I don't see the practical of a lot of change. And the one sentence in here that, that leads me to say I would vote yes for this is, "The relaxing or disabling of technology protection measures for the purpose of viewing child pornography or other obscene content is prohibited." So, I don't have a problem with not being able to relax that for those purposes. You know, it does, it's not specific. I mean, it's very specific. Child pornography or other obscene content, that you can't relax that. So, I don't have a problem going forward with this particular policy.
Any other comments? Ms. Pelletti.
So, you were saying, and this is my only concern because I agree with Mr. Levinstein, it does seem like, yes, we don't want child pornography being viewed in schools by anyone. But, you know, you said obscene material might be considered coding. And would this prohibit students from being able to use valuable sites? Would there be a way for you to enable that or is this just cut and dry, they can't use it now?
So, currently, if I had a course, for instance, if I had a teacher in a course that's planning a special project that is not AP or college-level and they had to lessen the filter or they were blocked on a site, maybe it's a, sometimes, whatever site it was and it had an educational purpose, I would, I could look at it, but I wouldn't be able to allow that teacher access to it. If this goes ahead because the specific boundary around the policy just says AP or criminal justice classes. So, in criminal justice, that could mean government. So, if there's a government class that's doing something or a U.S. history course, many of our history can be seen as obscene, I would not be able to lessen that.
This, this policy only deals with obscene child pornography. So, I don't understand your point of view when it's talking about educational material. If you determine that it's not visual depictions of obscene or child pornography, it is just a coding thing.
Right.
That, this policy does not cover that.
Right. But the thing is, is that once is deemed that way. So, suppose a teacher is trying to go to this site and our filters block it because it's obscene, right? If they tried to reach out to me and say, "Onyx, this is not obscene. This is a part of our unit that we're trying to do." The way that this policy is written, I wouldn't be able to relax it unless that course was AP or college-level. So, that, that's what, that's what it prohibits.
But you said you've never been asked.
I've never been asked, but, you know, every, we have really creative teachers that may ask for something, but I'm just letting the board know that as well. The Maris program would be covered under this because it's AP or college-level, but that's my only concern.
Dr. Farrell.
I think if we're talking about specifics such as the Maris program, AP, and college courses, we also need to consider some of our science material and research, some of our sociology material that examines frequently in research alternate lifestyles, as well as our history. Some of those sites can occasionally be flagged under this type of policy.
Has it been flagged in the past where?
I don't know that. I said some maybe. So, in excess of caution, if we're going to look, if the board is going to consider making those changes, what I would ask is that perhaps you take into consideration, instead of only providing for criminal history, AP, and college courses, criminal justice, rather, I'm sorry, that perhaps it be broadened to include other areas that might be affected. That's my only comment.
Where is the line drawn where other areas?
I think that's an educational prerogative and that's the kind of material that teachers would bring to Onyx for consideration. And if Onyx had any concerns, she would bring that to the superintendent. Thank you.
Dr. Campbell.
I mean, while I can, I understand some of the concern, but I encourage the conversation from the professionals in the district. We have a policy that we have not had any issues with, to my knowledge. Ms. Peterson has not, we have not had any issues in terms of child pornography. Our concern with changing this policy, again, there's been no assessment, just come in, change everything without having accurate information, right? So, it is important to have all the information before a decision is made so that we can iron these things out. We are moving to change policies that will have impact on our students. They could have a health course. That information is going to be blocked. We have, what I heard and what I know, is that we have two sites that already monitors what we have coming to our school district. So, to now remove or to put an additional, something additional to block additional access could impede our instructional programs and instructional processes. So, you know, I just want us to really have a conversation before we decide about what we think and what we feel. And I think Ms. Pelletti said it best, right? When you want to move to change a policy, it's not about what we feel or what we think or what we believe. It's about intent and per, it's about intent and purpose and I think you, and the law, right? So, it's not about opening or giving students or people an opportunity for child pornography. It's about how does this impact our educational system? Please utilize us as a resource. We are the professional educators and administrators in the district.
Mr. Levinstein.
Would putting, instead of just limiting it to AP and criminal justice, would putting high school classes in there make, make the?
I'm willing to open it up to high school. I'll make a motion that we adjust this to high school class. Roll call.
Okay. So, do we need to make a motion to adjust it to high school or can we just change it like that because at this point in time?
We can, we can add high school classes to the, motion.
So, does a motion.
Motion to amend to include high school.
Okay.
Wait a second.